So I want to begin by welcoming our new board members. So welcome to Mike Druin and to the returning board member Janet Krupp. Thank you so much to both of you for running and being sworn in and agreeing to be on our board. So thank you so much. Okay, any, would you like to say anything? So?
Oh, no.
And Janet?
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, so Yvette, we have a few appointments today.
Yes, we do. So first, we have Angela Putnam is here so that she can have her five-year anniversary of employment at the library recognized by the board. And what we traditionally do is we have these plaques in the lower hallway. And this is one of the five-year plaques. It says Merrimack Public Library in recognition and appreciation of five years of service. Angela, I just put yours in right here, so you can come see it next time you're in the building. And Janet? Do you have anything else to add?
I have a gift card, please.
To-
I love presents!
To celebrate your five-year anniversary for the library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Angela.
This may, I believe, other than coaching track and field, this is the longest I've been at any employer. I'm kind of a magpie when it comes to different kinds of jobs. And being a mother, obviously, is one of those huge ones, but I couldn't imagine a better place, better library to be at. It's been like a family, and it's just been lovely. It's really great patrons to work with. The community's been fantastic, and my husband's still jealous that every day I'm like, "I get to go to work! I get to play with books!" Best feeling.
Very nice.
Hi. Well, Angela, I want to say that that comes through in the way that you are at work. So your enthusiasm and your love for your job and the community comes through, and it's always a joy to see you at the library. So thank you for your commitment to the library and for always being such a helpful and pleasant presence there. It really is what makes the library great. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Deb.
And we're just going to keep giving you challenges, so you feel like it's always a new job, and you're not going to want to go anywhere else, so.
As long as I don't have to ever be a director, I'll be happy.
Great.
Our job!
I'm not sure how to take that.
It's just so hard. I'd rather-
For those of you who, for those of you who don't know, Angela started at the library at Circulation. And then there was an opening at Reference. And so now she's in the Reference Department, and it's really a huge benefit, I think, you know, to all of us because she has so much knowledge about circulation. And the Reference staff, when they're in the building and, you know, I'm not in the building or another manager's not in the building, they are in charge of the building. They're the librarian in charge. So they would have, you know, opening, closing, you know, troubleshooting any issues that we might have with anything. So it's a lot of responsibility, but you know, I think everyone at the Reference Desk is very capable to handle that, and Angela's absolutely capable, and she's just a great asset. And just-
Hey!
Very happy to have you and join us.
I have a cat in the room with me.
But you are not a cat, right? So you will say that. Okay. So F, if you've seen that meme. Okay, anyways. So Angela, thank you so much for joining us and for all that you do for the library. We really do appreciate it. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Angela. Great, thanks. We're so happy to have you. And then we have another appointment also. And Angela, you're welcome to stay wherever you would like to do, so.
Yes, we do. And so Benjamin Maynard is also here. Ben, if you could turn your camera on now, that would be great.
Oh.
Ben has been an intern, a student intern with us for, I think it's, I think we figured out it was 12 weeks or something. It's gone very quickly. Amazing.
Yeah, it's been about 12 weeks.
12 weeks. His last day will be the-
The 23rd. 23rd? Well, 22nd.
22nd, because he comes in-
Yeah.
Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It's probably not right. Monday. Anyway, I will let Ben speak. And, you know, it's always, I was saying to you earlier today, Ben, that it's always a pleasure for the board to speak to our interns when we have the opportunity to have them and just get some feedback about what your experience was like. We always want this to be a positive and educational experience for you so that you feel like, you know, you've learned something on the, on the front lines. And yeah, and I think if any of the board, if you want to certainly ask him questions, please go ahead and do that. So I will turn my mic off and hand it over to you, Ben.
Yeah, it's been very wonderful working in the, in the library for quite a while now. I've been working in, I believe, three different departments. Reference, Technical Services, and the Children's Department, and all three have given me a lot of experience that I wasn't really getting through most of college because I've been doing it online. Working onsite has gifted me. I think a leg up where other students just haven't been receiving that same library experience. They're doing most of their internships online. Some of them aren't even doing internships. They're just doing a very, very long report, which I think is a shame because it's been a wonderful time working here. I love everyone who I've been working with. They're great people to talk to, great workers. I feel like I've been doing good at the library. It definitely was a great use of my time. I'm glad that I chose Merrimack over any other librarian. That's kind of all I have to say. Just a lot of praise and happiness for choosing this position.
Well, and we should thank you because we've been hearing about all of the different projects that you've been working on, so that's been really great. So yeah, do you want to tell us, like, maybe share, maybe one or two projects that you worked on that you particularly enjoyed? That would be great to hear.
Yep. So it's mostly been weeding. There's the weeding project in Lowell and the weeding project downstairs in the children's room, as well as a re-labeling project for Technical Services, which I've been doing for the fiction and graphic novel series at the library, which they told me they thought it would never get done. So the fact that I've been able to get to it has really impressed them. And Lowell Room has been looking a lot cleaner. When we went in, there were a bunch of books that were just falling apart. And now that we've managed to put them in their, their right space, we can get them to libraries that may need them better than us, historical societies. And some of the books to book sales, so that they're more in the patrons' hands. It's freed up a lot of space, which would be used for patrons better if it wasn't so cluttered. So yeah, getting to that was a great. It made me feel like I was making a real difference in the library. Children's Department is always filling with new books, so yeah, less of a dent. But it's, it's felt nice as well to help them with their constant need to weed. Other than that, I've learned a lot in a technical aspect. I've learned how to clean some of the CDs in the library, which was, I didn't even know that was a thing that was offered by libraries before working here. I got to see a lot of the different materials that we give out, like the gaming consoles and such. Yeah, that's my thoughts on that.
Great, great. Thank you so much. Those make a huge difference, for sure, and it really a big help to the staff, too. Would, do any other trustees have any questions for Ben or anything you'd like to say? Well, we greatly appreciate that you did this, and thank you for coming and joining us tonight to share a little bit more about that, and good luck, good luck with the rest of your experience in college. And yeah, thank you so much.
All right.
Great. Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben. So when, when do you turn in your final project? And what is the final project?
Oh, the final project, it is a portfolio of everything that I have learned, as well as a few things which I will need to be reviewed and signed by you. One of them is a final log, which is all the times that I've gone through, as well as an assessment where you get to say, here's everything that I did right, and here's everything that I did wrong. Personally, I don't like the assessment much because it's a one to five and not a one to 10, so it's less room to move.
I, I don't like assessments either, I have to say.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll bring those to you. I believe before the 22nd, maybe tomorrow, maybe the morning of the 22nd. It shouldn't take too long to fill out. Other than that, a lot of check-ins in the discussion board, because even though I'm finishing up the internship, this class has not ended. So I still need to speak to my fellow students about how their time is going. I'm trying to think of what else there is that I need to do and what we need to do. It's gonna be a lot of paperwork, but I think assessments and log are the big ones. Oh, I do need to update my resume, though, so.
Yeah, you do. So just to let you know, Ben, you know, was a student and then interning with us, and then also working a part-time job. So very industrious, very busy, and managed all of it.
Great. So, that's great.
That's great.
Good experience. So yeah, great. And thank you again for all that you did for the Merrimack Library. We appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. Great.
Well, you're welcome to stay, or you can go.
Yep.
I probably do need to do some homework, so I might-
By all means. Yes, understood. Okay, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Have a very nice day. Bye.
Thanks, you too. Okay, any other appointments?
I, I don't have any other appointments listed, but I just want to let you know that Casey Bernard is here. She's in our Reference Department. And Brianna Beard is here also, and she's also in our Reference Department. So I'm assuming that you're here as part of the public, but-
Okay.
That's all I'm-
Great. Awesome. Okay, wonderful. Nice to have people here. So let's move on to old business. Our March action items. We had two things, three things, rather. The first one was that Janet was going to move Watson account money out of a CD when it matures on March 31st, 2021, and we'll make recommendations where to move the money tonight.
Yes, I did that.
Okay. And the second one was that I would forward a draft of the Memo of Understanding with the town to Paul McCally, which I did. And I just asked him, I just told him, just some background, Mike. So the library, we govern the library, the library trustees, but we have a relationship with the town, with the capital T town, who, they do a lot of administrative work in support of the library. So Janet had drafted a memorandum, Random of Understanding, because some of this has just evolved over time, and we thought it would be good for all parties to just have it documented, our understanding of the relationship. So it's not a contract. It's just kind of a, this is what we think it looks like, and this is what they think it looks like. So I sent it to Paul and just asked him, you know, hey, we're thinking about this. Here's a draft. What are your thoughts on it? So that's it. Okay. And then Strategic Plan Discussion was on as an action item. We are looking at the strategic plan, but we put that down for something we'd look at pursuing and discussing further in our May Library Board Retreat. So those were the three action items. Was there anything I forgot? I was taking that from the minutes. Okay. Next, we have copier on the agenda. It's really just a placeholder. Yvette did let me know that there's some information that was gathered by Joanne and Max regarding the copier, but we did not think it needed to be discussed tonight and that we had more things to deal with. So we're going to put it off to May, and Janet was okay with that. So and then Strategic Plan is also something of a placeholder that will, it'll be on our agenda for the Library Board of Trustees Retreat, unless anyone has anything they'd like to add or discuss about that. Okay, moving on to new business. In our bylaws, it says that the, at the first meeting after an election, we have an election of officers. We've had some discussion about this because of me in particular, who felt that new board members sort of get bombarded and don't really have a chance to speak up and say what they'd like to do. But our bylaws do say that we need to do this, so we have not changed those. Janet?
Can, let me make sure. Okay. Can we introduce ourselves for Mike?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I, yes, my apologies. Sorry. Please, thank you, Janet. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll go. I'm Janet Krupp. I've been on the board six years, so this will be my third term. I've been doing the treasure position for a while, and I'm always willing to give it up. But that's me.
Okay, and Karen, would you like to say?
Sure. I'm Karen Freed, and I, I don't know, Janet, did we come on at the same time, or was I a year, a year or two before you?
You're a year ahead of me.
Right, because what happened, yeah. I stepped into an unfinished position. Somebody had to leave or something. I think maybe that's why. Anyway, I've been here the longest now, except for, of course, Yvette. I was secretary for many years. And it, it is fairly time-consuming. So Janet, who, or Janice, who, who chose, she needed to leave the board, she took it over for a while, and now we need a secretary again. And I, I will, I will do it on an interim basis if somebody else would like to learn how. But yes, I, I think Deb does enough, so I'll, I'll offer unless somebody else would like to step in. Sounds like an echo of Janet.
Well, we're, we're not there yet. Let everybody introduce themselves and let them, let them consider it, okay? You never know. It might- Yes. Soheeney, thank you, Karen. Soheeney.
Hi, I'm Soheeney Gupta, and I am kind of new to this board. I just joined last year in my first, in my first term with any board whatsoever, so I'm still learning the ropes. And that's pretty much it. And, but I'm still following what Deb says, what Janet says, what Karen says.
Well, to be fair, Soheeney has gotten, was in a really bad position because the elections were held so late. So the elections weren't even held last year till-
June?
June, right. And then we did get an opportunity to meet in September, but we, together in person, but we've been meeting over Zoom most primarily, so it has been a different kind of year for you. So, for sure.
Yeah.
Yep. And I'm in my, this is my third year, I think. Second year, third year, I keep, second?
No, I think-
Four.
Second, I think.
Now, I think it's my second year.
It's your second year?
Yeah, my, so I've been on the board for two years, Mike, but I am, I worked at the Merrimack Public Library many, many moons ago, 20-ish, to be exact. So, and I'm a librarian by trade, so I work in a school library. So I have the advantage of kind of understanding a little bit about the, the setup of the library world. So I, but I've been on the board for two years. So please feel free to introduce yourself. I'm sorry I did not give you a chance to tell us more.
Well, I'm Mike Druin. I spent five years in the Navy and I moved to Merrimack, kind of after my first year. And, you know, I, I joined the Conservation Commission. I was appointed to that. And I'm Chair of the Sklar Waterfront Park. I also run the hike club and, you know, I like to do a lot of things for the community. That's, you know, I guess that's my hobby, you know, making things better for everyone. So that's one of the reasons why I'm here. I'd like to make the library better and more, you know, bring it into the present day. So it's not, you know, so it doesn't become an outdated relic because a lot of people rely on the library. It's not just for reading books, so. Yeah.
Great. Well, great. Well, thank you for joining us. When Army and Navy plays, you and I can have some discussions because we're an Army family over here, but that's okay. But thank you. Thank you so much for joining us. It's great to have you, and it'll be great to have your insight, the things that you know about the Conservation Commission and hiking and that sort of thing, because, you know, we, we do look to see what's going on in the town as a whole, right? So because the library is such an integral part of the community. So it's great. Thank you. All right, Janet, thank you for getting, keeping me on track and making sure that everybody had a chance to introduce themselves. So we do have three positions on our board. We have the Chair, the Treasurer, and Secretary. So those are the three that we would be electing this evening. So that's where we're at. So would anyone like to-
I'd like to make a motion that Deb Koval is the Chair.
My second.
Okay, so we will, Janet and Soheeney. Janet made motion, and Soheeney seconded. Okay, so Janet, how would you like to, oh, I should say, is there any discussion before? Okay, Janet, how would you like to vote?
Yes.
Okay, Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'll vote for myself, too. Okay, so I'm trying abstain. Would that be better if I abstained? But no, vote for yourself. I mean, in the election ballot, you do, right? The 5-0-0. Okay. So thank you. Thank you for your confidence. I'm happy to do it. I prefer it to Treasurer because the Treasurer job is, you know, the money, the money. The Treasurer job has a lot of details. There's a lot of money to be under, understood there. So would anyone like to make a motion regarding the Treasurer's position? Soheeney?
Yeah, I would like to have Janet still as the Treasurer.
Okay. As Treasurer. Janet, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay. So is there any discussion? For Janet's nomination? Okay, I will vote in favor for Janet. Mike?
Yeah.
And Janet, vote for yourself. Come on. Okay, Karen?
Yes.
Thank you. And Soheeney?
Yes.
Okay, so 5-0-0. So when we say about the money, and Mike, this is also something that over time, you know, it's a lot to learn because we have different trusts that we have. There's different rules regarding library money and how it can be spent. We have the money that's appropriated to us through the town, through the vote that everybody does, but then we also have income, income generating equipment. There are certain rules about how that money can be spent. So it's one of those things that will be, become clearer as we go through. So okay, so that leaves Secretary. So, you know, I guess Karen, I really hate to put you in that position because I know it's not something that you-
Fine. If, if I need somebody to assist me for a week-
I'll, I'll assist.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then I would like, then I would like to nominate Karen Freed as for Secretary of the Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Soheeney. And thank you for offering to assist her, so.
Yeah, and that, I will learn from her, too.
That's wonderful. Great, thank you. So Karen, and you accept the nomination. You're, you're willing to do it for us for a bit and see. Okay. Great, okay. So I will vote in favor. Mike?
Yeah.
Janet?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Soheeney?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And, you know, I think that Karen, I really appreciate you stepping in to do this, and we certainly will support you, and people will help out wherever they can, so.
That would be great. That would be, it's just, it's just when you're alone and doing it, and it, it's a lot, but-
I understand because I will have to make myself do this immediately to go down and then transcribe it, so I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. We also have committees, but why don't we go on with our agenda? And perhaps when we get to the committee updates, we can just talk a little bit about each of the committees and then give people a chance to think of how they'd like to get involved, rather than doing that right now. So okay, all right, policies. Yvette, do you have any policies for us to look at today?
No, not this month.
Okay, thank you. Open POs?
We were actually still not able to get into Unifund this week. So we don't have an updated list.
Okay. So I'll just provide some context whenever I can, that we have, at the end of the fiscal year, we can roll over, or we can put money into POs for purchases. And so we just want to make sure that we spend those before we spend from other places. So that's one of the things that we are looking at, is what POs are still open that we need to spend down. And every year is a little bit different. So thank you, Yvette. COVID statistics, which you sent us. This was something the board asked for to get a perspective on things. Is there anything you'd like to speak to about that?
Okay, so with the spreadsheet is, last year, March 17th, the board voted to close the library. And you'll remember, it was fairly sudden. We worked, you know, kind of finished the week doing curbside and trying to get people their holds. Angela was on rollerskates, if you remember. It was pretty awesome. But everyone worked really hard to put some, put some measures in place so that we could close. Of course, we had no idea how long we would be closed. I think a lot of us thought we'd be closed for two weeks, and then we'd be open again, which was not the case. But the staff turned around very quickly, and I think, you know, within two weeks, we had virtual programming up and running. People knew what they were supposed to do, working from home. We were doing virtual meetings and pivoted really quickly, and I think, you know, pretty efficiently. And then we created the reopening plan, you know, over the next couple of weeks. So we were closed. The building was closed to the public. Staff came back in June. Department heads and Jared, who's our custodian, we all had turns walking the building every couple of days to make sure everything was secure and kind of running the water and stuff like that. But otherwise, the building was closed to the public until the end of September. So what you see here are circulation statistics during that time. If you compare it to last year, it's a fraction of what we normally would circulate, and our, and our usage is lower. All of the libraries in the state of New Hampshire have the same kind of drop. Everyone closed, everyone moved to curbside. We were able to open with our safety measures in place, September 28th. Some libraries in New Hampshire still aren't open. So it's, it's, it's just, it's different. And when we report our statistics to the state this year, that, you know, their variance is, is it's all included in the report. So we all know this is a goofy year, you know. But it's very interesting to see, once we started curbside pickup, our numbers jump, you know, they really, really do jump. The G-Milks van started up again, intra-library loan, the state van- The G-Milks van started up again, intra-library loan, the state van started delivering again. We started intra-library loan services again. Casey Bernard is on the call and she is the intra-library loan librarian. And they had to come up with new procedures as well. You know, we're still quarantining materials for 72 hours. Some libraries have decided to drop down the time that they're quarantining materials. Other libraries went a whole different track and were wiping down materials as they came back. But you'll see our, our E-collection, our electronic digital collection went up and you'll remember that you increased funding to these lines. We added canopy, increased checkout for hoopla. And I think, you know, patrons really responded to that. If you jump down here to programming, I'm just scrolling down my own sheet about programming. You know, like I said, all of the departments moved very quickly to virtual programming. We're now doing asynchronous and synchronous programming. You know, for the youth services, if they're doing a video for teens, it's recorded and posted on YouTube. We, we no longer have meetings, community meetings, outside groups, you know, obviously we don't have our meeting rooms open yet. And just a reminder, and maybe for Michael's benefit, you know, that's because the lower room upstairs is being used to quarantine materials when they return. And the lower meeting room, the clump room, is being used as a staff break room and lunchroom because our staff kitchen, if we're, if we're maintaining social distance, we can put one person in the room. But normally we might have, you know, six people in there sitting close together. You'll remember that the board voted to suspend fines. And also, we, we were still giving out library cards during, during the building closure. So. I think, I think we, we did incredibly well. I really do. I'm very proud of the staff.
I would agree. So, great. Thank you for sharing that. Does anyone have any questions for Yvette about the COVID statistics or comments? Okay, I would just say, I love that we added so many new patrons while, like during this time. I think that's really wonderful that there were a lot of additions. So.
Yeah, and that was mostly because people wanted to use the digital services.
Yeah.
And can get on the website, you know, click on my account and create an account immediately and use it. You know, so people were really taking advantage of that, which is really nice to see.
That's great. I'm glad they were able to do that. Thank you. Okay, great. So next is our retreat. The trustees do an annual retreat. We did, Karen?
I just thought that this probably sounds a lot like gibberish to Mike. Faces. And G-Milks was mentioned a couple of times. So you might, you might wonder what G-Milks was. So I thought I would just mention that. Because it took me a while to figure it out.
So G-Milks is our library consortium. It consists of 12 libraries right now. And these are regional Southern New Hampshire. It's includes one academic library at New England College. When the Institute of Art in Manchester closed, we, they picked up the Teddy Library, which was part of that college. So now that, you know, technically it's an art library and an academic library under one library. But yeah, that's our consortium. We have been part of the regional consortium since the beginning. Merrimack was one of the founding members of this consortium. It's, gives us a lot more, I think, buying power. I think it's, it's great for professional development, but it's great for buying power in terms of the fact that we share our catalog. We share the cost of our catalog. There are two staff who are full-time consortium staff who manage kind of the business end of, of the catalog. A lot of it is the, the technical part of how, how items are, are maintained.
There's also an element of resource sharing and I was actually in the state when, like in the beginning days of this, and other states have sort of statewide consortiums or like regional consortiums within states that do this. But because of so much local control, that was not something that New Hampshire was really doing. There wasn't a lot of state support for that. So G-Milks was really revolutionary. And I think the people who are in the communities that are served by G-Milks get so much more access. We can go to any of their libraries. We can borrow materials very quickly. We see them all in the catalog. We just have a lot stronger library and a stronger library system because of it. So it's really a benefit. And there's a van that helps bring materials around too. So it's.
The Greater Manchester Eye?
Interlibrary Cooperative. I mean, we, we've debated the name and what people remember the letters stand for. And also, you know, we changed the logo and should we change the name? Because as more libraries join the consortium, you know, now we go out to Wyndham and Salem. We have courted Portsmouth. We've courted Concord, Nashua, you know, so it's moving away from Manchester or the Greater Manchester area. And then, of course, you know, New England Colleges and Henneker. So it's not really in that orbit of Manchester, but it's still, you know, you can take your Merrimack Library card and go into the Nesmith Library down in Wyndham and just check stuff out. You know, I mean, it's, and I think also, you know, the professional sharing that we get to do. I'll say, you know, I'm the president of the G-Milks Board right now. So I, you know, I've been on the board as a requirement since I've been the director. All of the directors of each library are, are board members. And each of our staff, we are required as board members to send our staff to their group meetings. So there's a group for circulation, interlibrary loan, for youth services and reference services and so on. So I hope that our staff, you know, really benefit from these connections and training, you know, I certainly benefit from the meetings that I attend every month.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you for pointing out that there's a lot of acronyms, right? That we don't take the time to understand. So.
New again today.
Yeah, awesome. That's great. Okay. And, and I thank you guys for just stopping me and being like, wait a minute, right? Because it's easy to just try to keep going through. So the retreat. So this is something that the trustees do usually in May. It's been Saturday mornings, I think, to the best of my knowledge. That's, and it's just a time for the trustees to talk about what's going on and where we want to go going forward. We were able to meet in September with Soheeney. And then we had a brief one in January also, I think, and which was really helpful. So I don't know if people feel like it would be good if we should get together. It's also an opportunity for Janet to update us all and give us a refresher course on the financials of the library, which is really wonderful for all of us, but especially for new trustees. So are people interested in pursuing a retreat in the beginning of May? Or would you like some time to consider it? And we can talk about it at our meeting next week. So what would you, I'm fine with us having one if people are interested. Janet? Did you want to say something?
No, I was just thinking. I'm interested in a retreat, but I'm not interested in it being in May.
Okay.
So even if it were, because like this meeting is April 20th, we're meeting next week with SMP. And then it's like, then we're into May. So maybe the beginning of June? Or, or even maybe saving it again, like we did in September. I think it kind of worked well in September because it gave us a little bit of trying to figure out what's going on.
I guess my only concern is that I, if there is, you know, I would want to then, if we weren't going to actually meet, set up a time that we could like explain a lot of things to our new trustee, you know, that sort of thing. So maybe like a conversation about if, if nothing else, I think having an understanding of how the financial thing, things work, because we'll start working on the budget in the fall. So if you don't really, you know, so that might, yeah.
Good point, good point.
So.
So maybe.
I mean, that really is you. That's really you. That's really. Yeah. So I don't know if, if maybe we should meet in the beginning of June to just, you can give us our little financial overview. That sort of thing. I know if people would find that useful. Yes, no? Okay, so I have a senior. So my June is going to be very exciting. So I guess graduation is the, I don't know. I think graduation, I think graduation is the 12th. So I am not available that weekend. But if people would like to try to meet, like tentatively, we could schedule like something for the morning of June 5th, perhaps. Just, you just pencil it in tentatively as a date. That way, Mike, you will have been to a couple of board meetings and maybe we'll have some questions for us and, which you can certainly give us at any time. You can reach out to any of us, of course. But I think it's also good for all of us to hear sort of a, just a reminder, this is how our money works and this is what we have in different trusts and that sort of thing. So would June 5th? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, we're also so used to things that sometimes it is nice when you get a fresh perspective and you go, oh, yeah. And we can answer those questions as well. Whatever those end up being.
Can we just pencil in perhaps June 5th? Then we can confirm it as we go, but just pencil it in. I know it's hard to know what's happening. Mike, are the weekends okay for you for something like this? I don't know what your schedule is like.
I'm very flexible.
Okay. Great. So why don't we tentatively say, we'll be looking at June 5th in the morning? And, you know, if something comes up or we need to change it, but at least sort of keep that in the back of your mind as a possibility for the time to retreat. But do reach out with questions before that. Janet?
In person or Zoom?
I think that's really gonna depend, isn't it? Maybe that's something.
I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I don't know what people's comfort level is. And maybe I feel like we, maybe we'll have a better idea when we meet in May. Perhaps we can make the decision then, but which way we'd rather do it. Okay. All right, I'm, I'm being joined by my, my guests. So, okay, so great. Um, we, we have a meeting with the architects from SMP scheduled for next Tuesday. I believe it was 6:30. Is that correct? That, no, it's the 28th, isn't it? Is it the 27th to the 28th, Yvette? 20?
28.
28, I'm sorry, for next Wednesday, the 28th. So, Mike, just another little bit of context. We have hired SMP architects to do some site investigations for us. They looked at the possibilities of expanding the library, building a library on the current site. They also looked at two other locations for us. The Twin Bridges Park, the, where the MIA building is, and then on the land that was sort of earmarked for the library next to the post office. And we decided that the ones on the current side of the library were prohibitive in many ways. So I think that the board's overall favor was that we were interested in the, one at the MIA building and the one at the, the land that had been earmarked for the library. So we're meeting with him to, or we're not necessarily meeting with him. We are meeting on the 28th to talk about it. And Jason would like to know if we would like him there to have part of, some part of this discussion. I mean, I think it would be valuable to have him there. He had asked that we, you know, we should look at the, the pros and cons of each site and bring that forward. But Mike, we want to give you a chance to look at them too and ask Jason questions. So would people like him to be there with us on Wednesday? He said that he could. Yes?
Is there any reason why we wouldn't want him there? I mean, is it going to cost us extra or anything like that?
Well, everything costs us extra, but we have set aside money for it. So, and I think, and I think that we have to remember that our time is valuable also. And is it better for us to have our questions answered and know what we're thinking, talking about? Or to just come up with a list of questions and then call him back, right? So I think that if people are going to have a chance to look at the plans and really give them some thorough thought. And by plans, these are just site investigations. They were just saying if the site was possible at all. There really, there's nothing set in stone. There's no, he just gave us like a design of like, we could make this work, right? So even the plans that he gave us were very rudimentary, as I think he made clear to us. So I, I think it would be useful to have him there, but I wanted to see what the consensus of the board is. Janet, Karen.
So it'd be good to have him there.
Okay.
You think it would be good? But I have a question about this. So I've gone through the plans and actually, I'm glad to hear your, your comments about the current site selection, the ones that he did with that. But when I look at the MIA, MIA site and the Pinenberg site, the woods, knowing that they're conceptual, I can be like, yep, they're conceptual. Something can go there. So what's my next step in terms of analysis?
So maybe that's just a good reason to have him there also, to like, talk about what, what, I don't, we could ask him for some feedback before we meet with him on that.
I mean, I was, because I didn't know. Okay, because I know he mentioned that internally and even structurally, if something needed to be moved or a little bigger or tweak here, tweak there, it's all doable because it's, it was just conceptual. Yes, this is something that could go on that site. I just, I, I didn't know where to go from there, other than saying, like, for me, and I'm going to throw it out there, I liked the MIA site. I liked what they did for that. And, but I can still do the woods, but I'm trying to just go beyond just saying, oh, I like what this one does versus the other. I want the next step.
Yvette, please.
Just a reminder that one of the things that Jason asked each board member to do was to perform a strengths weaknesses, obstacles or opportunities and threats. So that's one way to frame it. I don't know, Deb, if you were putting together anything beyond that or?
No, I think that that would be useful. But could you send the plans, the links and information to Mike too, so that he has them?
Already doing.
Okay, awesome. Yeah. So I guess if we can, if we all come on the 28th with the SWAT, that would even just give us an opportunity to discuss our, our thoughts on that for Jason, because that will inform all of the other steps in the process. So.
I just didn't know how detailed, because like I said, if we know internally, things can be changed, then in my own head, I was like, okay, I'm not thinking about what's going on internally, just like location and basically just the location.
Yeah, but I think that he did, I mean, we're saying it's, can something happen here, right? And things can be tweaked. But he did put stuff in the building, right? So I think even we can say, I like this, the storage, like I think we have to start somewhere. So there has to be some, some points of discussion. So Yvette, can you ask Jason to join us on the 28th? Okay, at 6:30?
Yvette, by chance, do you have a list of requirements that were given to Jason?
I have the original RFP.
No, that's not what I mean. I mean, like internally.
Oh, I have the study that Stibler Associates did.
Yeah, I have that.
Could you send us that too, just so it's up at the top of our box? Thank you. Okay, so Stibler did a space study, Mike, which has sort of informed a lot of this going forward. So. Okay, all right. So we will have Jason join us and we will be meeting on April 28th at 6:30, I would assume via Zoom, since he will be zooming in with us. So. Okay. Any other things for the meeting with SMP that need to be talked about? Okay, Zoo New England. Yvette?
So we would like to add another library pass to our museum passes. This is Zoo New England. It is, what we're thinking is 100 tickets. It is, what we're thinking is 100 tickets for $250. Each tickets, each ticket admits up to six people. The discount for a patron's admission is $9 for an adult and six for a child. Under two is free. They're following COVID restrictions. With, with all of our passes, you know, a patron can reserve the pass and check it out, but should coordinate with the host venue to see if they have any other guidelines that need to be followed, such as, you know, a certain time slot or things like that. Yes, Karen.
Where is it?
This is, I would need to.
Stoneum.
It's the Stone, Stone Zoo and the Franklin something zoo.
Oh, Franklin Park. A combination.
Yep.
Oh, got it. Okay, so it's Massachusetts.
Yep.
Which we also have, you know, passes to the aquarium down in Boston.
Children. Yeah, yeah, just, I just hadn't heard that term before, Zoo New England.
Yeah, so Franklin Park Zoo and Stone Zoo and Stoneum. And Franklin Park Zoo is in Boston and Stone Zoo is in Stone.
Mm-hmm. And both shows sold out through 23rd and 24th.
We don't have passes yet. We would get the passes and then work with them to, to coordinate what their guidelines are.
I'll bet you it would be popular, especially since Animal Planet does a lot with zoos and so people are learning about them and are interested in them.
Well, and I'm also thinking people would wanna do outside activities, right? So that's the.
I think being able to provide families with outdoor activities this summer is a great idea, you know? I think it's been, I, I, I don't, I don't, I think it's been a while since we've offered a zoo pass.
So we, the trustees buy the passes, so this comes out of our funds. That's why Yvette is asking us. So Janet, any thoughts on funding this?
Sound good.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion that we, um, buy a, would I consider it a membership, Yvette? So.
One, one year, one year membership.
Okay, so my motion is that we purchase a one-year membership to Zoo New England, which would be 100 tickets for $200 or $250, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there an option, if it's wildly popular, to buy more?
I don't know.
Okay, all right, well, we'll start here. So I would like to make a motion that we purchase a one-year membership, which is 100 tickets for $250.
A second.
Karen, seconds. Any discussion? Okay, so I will vote in favor of this. Janet?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Soheini?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yes.
Great, 500 motion passes. Thank you, Yvette, and I believe Arfa was the one who did the work on getting all the information. Is that correct? So thank you to Arfa as well. That'll be much appreciated. I'm already thinking, can I make it there? Okay, so thank you. Yeah, no. Okay, great. Thank you so much. So that was everything under new business. We are moving on to the operating budget. We have the March 2021 general ledger and invoice manifest. Are there any questions for Yvette or concerns?
I don't have anything.
Does anyone else have anything for Yvette? Okay. Moving on. Directors' report.
Okay, so just to go back to the invoice manifest and, um, the general ledger for the library staff were present and Michael as well. Um, every month, the board asks to see where we are in the budget. So the document that looks like this is printed out from Unifund, which is a town. All right, it's not even a website. It's a town, uh, thing that lists all.
Financial system.
Financial system. Thank you, Janet. I know I keep you around for some reason. But this is, this is, you know, it, it tracks, um, in great, great detail, every department in the town spending. Each line in our budget has a number, an account number. Um, and so it's everything from all of our wages down to um, office equipment is listed here, um, with how much we've spent year to date and month. I usually print out the month, you know, first to the 31st or something like that. And then in conjunction with that, um, the trustees have asked to see what the monthly invoices are, things, you know, what's, what's going on. I think it's, uh, it might be a little challenging to just see the general ledger and just see numbers and account numbers and and not really see what all is actually going on here in the library. So you can see, you know, what our gas bill is, what have we spent on the telephone this month and, um, that kind of thing. So. Yeah. That's, that's what these two pieces of paper are. So no question.
Thank you, Yvette.
No problem.
Okay. Uh, and on to your report.
Okay, so directions report. First thing is we received a gift for, um, a donation of a library card from Sasha Santana. It's in very good condition and we would like to accept it. So trustees, uh, have the authority to accept gifts, which is why I'm asking.
Okay. Karen, I'd love to entertain a motion. Would you like to make one?
I would. I move that we accept a donation of a library card from Sasha Santana with our thanks.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Janet. Okay, um, I will vote in favor. Oh, sorry, is there any discussion about the library card? Okay, I vote in favor. Um, Mike?
Yeah.
Thank you, Janet.
Yes.
Thank you, Soheini.
Sorry, I was mute. Yes.
Thank you. And Karen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, everyone for that motion passes 500 and thank you for the donation.
Okay, um, I'm not sure, uh, what questions you have about the report, but you know, let me know if you do have questions, of course. Um, I did put on here that we are continuing to watch additional funding, um, that is coming, um, through the ARPA bill. Um, there's another, uh, relief fund from the ALA. I'm attending different webinars. You know, group meetings and stuff, uh, virtually about those to find out what the parameters are for the, for requesting those funds. Also, I put on my report about the COVID-19 reopening plan here at the library. I, I did speak to the department heads today at our meeting and I went over all of the universal guidelines, um, that are currently up on the governor's website. Um, and, and just to kind of, um, put it out there, you know, right now, even though he lifted the mask mandate, we're still under the universal guidelines, which include mass social distancing, um, having the seats, um, you know, six feet apart to promote the social distancing, limited, um, people in the building, you know, all of those measures are still in place under universal guidelines. So it feels to me that at this point, we have nowhere to move to. You know, um, we brainstormed a lot of things in department heads and I know that the department heads have spoken to their own staff as well. Um, and it, it, we, I don't think we can really come up with, with something to recommend to you until after May 7th, when the new documents will be posted to the website for the governor. Um, so that's, that's one thing, you know, I, I, you know, I can't recommend anything until I know what he's, you know, what the CDC is, is recommending and what the New Hampshire Department of Health and, you know, Services is, Health and Human Services is also recommending in terms of being in a workplace. You know, so I think we, we would still be under, you know, the staff performing self, you know, health checks. Because we're still, the guidelines are still looking for, you know, any symptoms that are unusual that you have and employers are required to not allow staff who are feeling ill in the building. You know, that's kind of where we have to land. I think also something for you to consider, once we start working on pieces of a reopening plan, you know, and trying to see what order we can do things in. I mean, I, I would just recommend we closed really slowly and we've been opening slowly. I would probably recommend we continue to open slowly and see how things are. But you may wanna consider having the town attorney also review this document because they reviewed it when we closed.
So are you saying review, um, the new recommendations you would make to us or review the plan that you sent to us?
That is, the, the plan I sent to you is, is just so you have it at hand where we are right now. And I don't think we can make any changes to it. I certainly can't recommend any changes to you until I know what the new guidelines are that are coming down from this date.
So I think that's great advice when you come, um, when you and your staff have worked on something. Um, I would completely be in support of having the town attorney look at it. That makes sense to me.
Okay, I mean, we're looking at everything, um, you know, very carefully and cautiously as we always have, but we're gonna be looking at, you know, how can we reinstitute ser, reinstate services and how can we reinstate hours? You know, um, and just try and put everything together. You know, one thing that came up in this meeting was staff, new staff that we hired during our kind of COVID year, were hired under different hours than our previous pre-COVID hours when we used to be open until nine. You know, and we were open on Sundays and things like that. So it's gonna take a little bit of time to rethink the schedule. You know, and make sure that the people that we've hired can actually work those different hours. So it's, it, it's more complicated as I dig into what all we need to think about, but I'm, we will be able to come up with a plan. We all wanna open, but we wanna open and safely.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for Yvette about anything in her director's report?
I would just like to say that I really enjoy getting a detailed picture every month of, of things that are going on. I really, this, this is something that's really gives me an overview. Answers a lot of my questions before I even ask them, so.
Okay, I, I mean, I, I appreciate that the department heads are, they're the ones who, who give me their lists and I put them together and I put mine together, but, um, you know, they're, they're doing a lot of work. Um, a couple of things I wanna bring to your attention, the garden club has been in, um, Saturday and they were even here today, um, doing the cleanup in the garden areas on the corner. Um, and, uh, they remember where the sign, the granite sign was to be placed because they moved flowers to accommodate it. And I didn't remember that. So Jared has again moved the stakes, uh, and it was at a slight angle. So if you could make a final, final, final decision and see, do you like it at this slight angle or centered on the window? But I, I'm still coordinating with the garden club to make sure that we can work around all of the things that they're doing in the garden, because a lot of these plants are very well established. So we just wanna be mindful of that.
The slight angle, is it towards Babusik Lake Road or is it towards the highway?
It's toward Babusik, but it's even slighter than the first one we put in.
Okay.
So, and I, I, I can
Whatever is.
Show you guys if you, you know, if you wanna stop by the library, that's fine. Um, the other thing I need to bring to your attention is, um, the Gmail X board um, is recommending that all of the libraries, um, turn on something called auto renewal. Um, what this means is you can check your book out here in Merrimack for two weeks and then you don't have to call the library or get on your account to renew it when it's due. We will automatically renew it. The, we'll, we'll set the computer so that it will automatically renew for you when it's due and, um, what we're recommending is to have auto renew twice. So someone could have an item out for six weeks. There's really not a lot of downsides to turning on this feature. One of the benefits is it's just very convenient for patrons. Um, and they don't have to call us or, you know, they don't really have to pay attention in the way they might have to now about when their items are due. Things that will prevent something from automatically renewing is, um, if there's a hold on it already, then that item does have to be renewed, uh, does have to be returned. Um, we're also going to exclude library of things from, from this, um, and, and a collection called Hot Books. These are the very popular items that you can't put on hold anyway. So, um, we're gonna see how it goes, um, you know, but there should be a great benefit to our patrons. I think in Merrimack, you know, usually patrons call the library, so you know, it won't, um, you know, our staff will be freed up to do other tasks rather than answering the phone a lot. In terms of the dues for, for Gmail X, because each library does pay dues to be part of the consortium. If all of the libraries who don't have auto renewal turned on, turn it on around the same time, then it won't impact our dues, um, as harshly. When Bedford Library, uh, turned it on a few years ago, their dues spiked and went up a lot because of the difference in circulation stats. So we're trying to prevent that, but you know, the libraries that do have it turned on have really seen a lot of benefit and their patrons really, really appreciate it. So that's, that's kind of, you know, it's the recommendation from the board. All the directors, we were asked to go and inform our trustees and see if they had any concerns about it, but I, I personally, I don't see a lot of red flags at all.
Is ours on? Is, is it automatic renewal on in Merrimack?
No, it's on in Bedford, because if you check out a book from Bedford, you get an email saying your item has been automatically renewed.
I was just gonna, I was gonna ask you if they would give, send us an email saying that things were auto renewed, because for people who actually do keep track of their due dates, I don't understand that, but maybe they do, and they might be wondering why there was coming up.
Cause I got a, I, I got an email that said, this book has been automatically renewed and I thought, cool.
Yeah, but there, there is some confusion if only, you know, if I only use Bedford because it's next to our town. Um, and I get these emails for one library, it, it's confusing, you know, so if we were trying to act more consortially in the consortium, and that is not easy in the live, free or die state. Okay, so this was one thing we could say, you know, everyone, keep your own circulation, you know, checkout times, two weeks, three weeks, whatever it is, but if you can turn on auto renewal, might, it might, at least we can take one step towards being more consortiumal and.
It sounds like it's a plus for our patrons and that's, we wanna make things as easy as possible. Does anyone have any concerns about this? I have, I have, do you need us to vote on this, Yvette, or is this just something you can go with or?
Uh, you can vote on it if you, if, sure, why not? You can vote on it. Yeah, why don't you vote on it?
Because especially if it's going to, if there could be an impact on our dues, depending on how it goes, I think that probably would be a good thing to do.
There will be an impact on the fines as well, because if people are auto renewing, then they won't accrue fines, they'll, they'll just be able to return their items. So that's, um, sure, there's a financial effect, but we're not collecting fines right now.
Okay. Are there any questions before I make a motion?
Well, did you have a question? It seemed like you were gonna say something.
It's about the carry beam. It's not about this. I just, it occurred to me that we should, we should vote on this. So. Okay. So I'm gonna take minutes for a second that we had a discussion about this. So, um, Okay, so I guess I would like to make a motion that Merrimack turn on the auto renewal feature. In conjunction with our current loan period. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Let's see, Karen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Heaney?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Okay, and I vote yes. Thank you, everyone. That passes five zero zero. So in Eva, we know that everybody's going to want to do this, so it's not going to be so obvious that we have, our dues aren't going to go up that much. So thank you for bringing that to us.
We'll aim for probably May first to start that. Give us some time to get some publicity together.
I think people are going to love it. It's just going to be one less thing you have to worry about, right? Cause I do get those emails and go, ah, what's overdue? So thank you. I, I just have the carry beam for some reason is just one of those things that I worry about. Can you tell us about the carry beam replacement, please?
So I'm waiting for the vendor to get back with me to schedule that project. And I think what I, I think what I need to do is just have Northern Lights come in and remove the top two granite steps. It's, it's a little challenging to coordinate two vendors and the police. So I think if we just, you know, have the granite steps removed, then they can come in whenever they're available and look under the building.
Okay, so Mike, in installing some granite steps, they found that there was a carry beam that needs to be replaced, which just, yeah, I, I, I need to have that done. So thank you Eva for being on that. That is worrisome and I'm glad they found it and were able to address it, so. Okay. All right, thank you. Anything else from Eva's director's report that we need to? Okay, great. Treasurer's report.
All right. So. If you bring up the balance sheet. That's where we'll start. The balance sheet for March in fines. We started with seventy, seven thousand five hundred and seven dollars and eighty-two cents. And we ended with seven thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixteen cents. And then if you move down towards the end of the page. In our special account. We started with a balance of nineteen thousand ninety-two dollars and thirty-eight cents. And we ended with fifty-two thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. And yes, that is a lot because the Watson account got moved. The Watson money is a trust that we received from Geraldine and Harold Watson. I can't give you a date. I don't remember. And we have a thirty thousand dollar trust from them that the library manages. That was sitting in a CD at DCU until March 31st, and then the money got moved over to special. So in next month, you'll see that the thirty thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars got moved over to savings. So it's not in the checking account, because that was actually where it was supposed to be, but it got moved there first because of DCU. So, but we do have a thousand dollars from the trust that will be used in fiscal year 21, 22. For books. Or whatever. Whatever. So that's why special is so large, the balance is so large. The other, so with the Watson account, obviously it, the, the trust matured, the money got moved. The money got moved to savings and then we kept the thousand. The CDs obviously closed. I do have a recommendation as to where to move the money. At fidelity, but given that. Two things, one, I still have, I need permission to move the money from the savings account, special savings account. The thirty thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seven cents from savings to move it to fidelity. And that would have taken some time. And then once it's there, we could invest it in this fund that I'm looking at if you want to. But I thought I would just give that information next month, because everything has to be moved anyway.
Okay.
So that's the Watson. So first thing I need. I'd like to make a motion to move the thirty thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seven cents to fidelity.
My second.
And Janet, you sec, Karen, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is there any discussion about moving that money? Okay, I will vote in favor. Mike?
Yeah.
So Heaney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
And Janet?
Yes.
Okay, so we are going to, that's going to be moved, it's past five zero zero, so move from DCU to fidelity.
Correct, and it's thirty thousand two hundred and twenty-four.
Yep, I have the report right in front of me. Thank you.
All right, the other thing is, so I've been in contact with Chris Christensen, who's the trustee of the trust funds. And I, we need to move all the Quimby money to the trustees of the trust funds now that the paperwork is signed and done. So in our savings, in our Quimby savings account, we have thirty thousand five hundred and eight dollars, six cents. So Chris told me that I could get a cashier's check to the town of Merrimack. And then I can just hand deliver it to, or mail it, whichever, to, and give it to the town. So. So this money, so. We had a patron who passed away and his family has since donated. Actually closer to forty thousand dollars in memorial to his son. And it's Dr. Quimby and it was his son Barry. And so now this money, we've worked with the trustees of the trust fund. We've worked with a bunch of lawyers and Dr. Quimby to set up a trust to, to invest. And the earnings and the income will be spent the way he wants it spent. Based off this trust that just finished last month or the month before. To give you a little, little background. So. So that I need, I'd like to make, to make a motion to have the thirty thousand five hundred and eight dollars, six cents from the Quimby Memorial Savings. Be released to the trustees of the trust fund.
My second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, Karen?
Have we, have we seen the agreement that, that actually states that what is, is the money is to be spent on? And that then it goes into, that it goes into the town instead of the trustees monitoring it? Is, is that what we originally wanted?
Yeah, so that was something we've had, we had a lot of back and forth about that because, and Janet, please correct me if I'm wrong, that we really felt that, that, that it was more appropriate for that money to be managed by the trustees of the trust funds. That that is, was the better place for it to be.
Rather than in the library itself.
But, and it is still, we decide, you know, we, the money can only be used for the library, which I think was one of the concerns. That the, the trustees of the trust fund will manage it, but it still will be devoted to the library. That it does not become part of the town trust. It's still a library trust, but they're managing it, so.
And was this a special agreement or has this happened in other circumstances too?
That's kind of hard to answer, because the trustees of the trust fund do manage money that was given to the town to benefit the library. We have, they manage trust funds for us. However, the money went to the town and says, and it stipulates to benefit the library. Now this one is, the money is given to us, but the trustees of the trust fund manage it. So we worked with the lawyers. I talked with the Attorney General and that's all legal and it's fine to do. So it was just that because they already had trusts and they work with an investing firm, Cambridge Trust. It was, it was better to give them the money. And they, because it's also a municipal fund or municipal organization. They have rules in terms of where the money, how the money is separated from what's principal, what's income? How principal earns, how income earns? And it's like two sides of the ledger. And it's, it's organized that way because Dr. Quimby was, he wanted certain things and certain percentages, different ways. And it, it didn't work out well. So we're working with the municipal, the municipality, it, it works well.
Okay.
But the, the Quimby trust that I'm pretty sure Deb sent out, and we can definitely send it out to everybody again.
I think you did.
It does stipulate what's to be income, what's to be principal, where the money is to be spent. He doesn't designate like a percentage for this or a percentage for that. He just opens it up and says, these are like the four items that I'm interested in and the trustees can decide where you want it to be. So.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
That might be something where we, I, I could see taking maybe a quick look at that at the retreat.
Yeah, we can look at all the trusts.
It was a learning experience for us, for sure. It was a very, yeah.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, great. Thank you for the question, Karen. Is there anything else for this motion before we vote on it? Okay, there is a motion for thirty thousand five hundred eight dollars and six cents to be moved from the Quimby Memorial Savings, I'm sorry, to be released from the Quimby Memorial Savings to the town trustees of the trust fund.
Yep.
Okay, and there was a second by So Heaney. So Heaney, did you want to say something?
No, it's okay. The second, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so I will vote in favor. Karen?
Yes.
So Heaney?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
And Janet?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you Janet, as always, for your attention to these details, so.
Okay, I have another one for that. So the, so Dr. Quimby also gave us middle sex. Middle sex water utility stock. Yeah. And so that's sitting in our fidelity account. At the close of today, it was eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars. I don't know what will end up being once it's released. But that's another thing that needs to be released to the trustees of the trust fund. So it's middle sex. Oh.
Middle sex water utility. Waterworks or something.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
And that will need to be sold and then the money will be, have to be moved, so.
Middle Sex Water Company.
Yeah. I'm looking at it right now, so.
Middle Sex Water Company.
Yep. And it is, it's still, it's eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and zero cents. So, and he gave it to us just for reference, it was ten thousand, like twenty-eight dollars, just right around ten thousand dollars. So it has earned some.
But that needs to be sold.
And then, and then moved over to the trustees of the trust fund. And Kristen, tell me exactly how this part's going to be done. So I, I have to work on it with him. But he told me how to do it with the, with DCU. And I know I have to sell this, but I'm not sure if it's just. I don't know the next step.
Okay. So let me ask you, would you like to make a motion or would you like to see if you can find out something? And we can add it to our agenda before we meet with Jason next week, so that it's accurate, whatever you would like to do.
Yeah, I'll, I'll finalize it with Chris.
Okay.
And then.
So then the motion can accurately reflect what's going to take place of the moving money. So Eva, if you could put that on our agenda for when we're meeting with Jason, that we will have a vote on the move, the sale and moving of the stocks beforehand, on the 28th. So that way you'll still have time to get it done, Janet. It won't wait till the next meeting, so.
Exactly.
Okay.
Okay. Quimby we got. Okay, in. In our fines. Is it here? Nope, it's next month. I'll do it for next month. It's done. I mean. I have a question. For regarding. I don't want to say it, the. This, I see, money to be spent or to encumber, I, I hate saying it that way. It's with the, with the thought that there might be extra, and I don't want to say that either, but extra money that was supposed to be for staff that because of turnover and not there, there's an excess in that line. I'd like to think about where that money is going to be spent. And I know, where are we? We're in April. It will come probably next month. Yeah. One thing I was thinking about was the carpets, because it's on the CIP and you only have it listed as ten thousand. And I don't know if that's accurate. Eva, you might have a better idea. But given that there's not a lot of traffic in the building and it would get off the CIP. It, it might be a good option to spend some of that money on the CIP.
I can talk to Joanne about having the vendor come back and give us some quotes. What we were thinking, you know, the carpet is as old as. I don't even know.
I believe I helped move furniture in 2000. So, yeah.
It's two years old. We found that, you know, why it's on a CIP to, to remind you guys is because when we've had floods downstairs or carpet cleaning, just to have our routine annual cleaning. The, the fibers of the carpet are coming up. And it's, it's, the integrity of the carpet has, it's lived its life. So things, you know, how other libraries are tackling this is to actually replace the carpet with carpet squares. So that if you have a, you know, a stain or something in one section, then you can very easily replace that rather than tearing out an entire wall-to-wall carpet. So that's, that's what we're thinking, because it's just more practical. And we have had instances when there have been, you know, kind of concentrated areas where sections of the carpet have been, have had to be replaced. So we do have a vendor, that's probably where we got the quote, but I. So, we do have a vendor, um, that's probably where we got the quote, but I can certainly ask Joanne to follow up with him again, and have him come in and see, you know, give us a new quote. That's a great idea.
Yeah, I would. If you can look at that, that would be great.
Great, thank you, Janet.
I'm done.
Okay, any questions for Janet? Okay, thank you, Janet. Okay, acceptance of minutes. We have a lot of minutes to accept. Janice worked really hard to get us all the minutes before she left the board, so, um, I've made note of the ones I believe we need to approve. If there's any that I missed, by all means, let me know. The first one I have, excuse me, in front of me, is our March second, which was, um, our meeting with Jason of SMP. So, um, do you have any corrections or comments on the March second meeting minutes?
Okay, I have any issues on any of them.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion then, that we, um, accept the minutes of our March second, twenty-twenty-one meeting.
I'll second.
And, let's see, Karen?
Yes.
Soheeney? Soheeney? You're still muted, sorry.
Sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, but then I'm realizing, okay.
Okay, I will vote yes, and Janet?
Yes.
And Mike, I'm guessing you will abstain, since you were not there, so. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, then I have in front of me, the March sixth, um, non-public session meeting minutes. This was when we did our draft of the Director's Annual Review. Any comments, corrections, or anything that people want to note? Okay, then I will make a motion that we accept the March sixth non-public meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you, Karen. And since we are on Zoom, we do need to do a roll call vote, so I will vote in favor. Janet?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Mike?
Same.
Thank you. Okay, the next ones are the, that I have in front of me, are the March eleventh um, non-public meeting minutes as well. This was when we finalized Eva's evaluation. Okay, any, I will vote, I'm sorry, it's all a blur. I will make a motion that we, um, accept the minutes of March eleventh. Non-public. Thank you, Karen. I will vote in favor, Janet.
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
Mike? Thank you. Um, then we have our monthly minutes, and that was from the March sixteenth meeting. Did anyone have any corrections or comments that wanted to make on here? Okay, so I will make a motion that we accept the March sixteenth minute meetings. Um, minute meetings, minute, yeah, that's right, meeting minutes. Okay, um, do I have a second? Thank you, Karen. Um, I will vote in favor. Karen?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
And Mike? Thank you. Um, the next ones I have in front of me are the March twenty-third um, public meeting we had with Jason, where he presented the conceptual design for, and the Pinenberg property. Any comments, questions? Okay, I will make a motion that we accept the March twenty-third meeting minutes.
Let's keep.
Karen's on a roll, she will second. Okay, thank you. Um, I will vote in favor, Karen.
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
And Mike?
I'm staying.
Thank you. Okay, just one more. We really were busy last month, so we have, um, the meeting minutes of our non-public session on April sixth, which was our, um, review of Eva. So, any comments, questions, or thoughts on that? Okay, um, I will make a motion that we accept those minutes.
I'll second.
Karen, okay, um, I'm in favor. Janet?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Soheeney?
Yes.
And Mike?
I'm staying.
Thank you. I cannot promise that the minutes I'm taking tonight will be as error-free as those were. So, thank you to Janice for all of her hard work and getting those done before she left. Okay, um, committee updates. So, these are four committees that trustees serve on, and, um, we're really just kind of like a liaison on them. And, um, so, Karen, do you, um, well, actually, why don't we just go through them, we'll tell Mike a little bit about each one? And then people can express what they might be interested in working on this year. So, the Building Exploratory Committee, that really hasn't met, that is made up of, um, people from uh, two trustees, the, some people from the Friends Board, and the Merrick Public Library Development Fund Board. So, um, we haven't really been exploring anything. We're really in the very initial stages of that, so we have not met. So, that's that committee that's on there. Uh, Friends, would someone like to speak to the Friends of the Library? Janice was the person who did a lot, who was our representative with the Friends. So, Eva, can you tell us when they meet, and what the commitment would be for a trustee?
Uh, the Friends of the Library meet on the last Monday of the month. Um, our Friends group manages, um, the three book sales that happen in a, in a pre-COVID year, and hopefully post-COVID year. Um, and they are a group of volunteers that, um, support the library. Um, they do not have any governance authority in the same way that the trustees do. Um, so, yeah, they meet, um, on the last Monday, so they're meeting actually on the twenty-sixth. They're meeting next week. Uh, right now, they're still meeting through Zoom. And as Deb said, the trustee who attends these meetings acts as a liaison. They do ask for a trustee report, um, and then talk about things that they are working on, um, things that they might be fundraising for, or other ways that they can support the staff and, and our mission.
Thank you, Eva. Angela, um, would you like to speak to the Friends? Is that why?
They also do the Turkey Shoot every year.
Well, not this year. Yes.
But, in general, that they fundraise for the library.
In, in the past, they've done our annual Turkey Shoot, which I think has been ten years. Um, we didn't do it this year, and they did a wreath fundraiser instead, where we had staff created, um, several wreaths, and they were donated to the library and raised, I don't remember how much money. Um, but they, you know, they really, um, they don't do a lot of, um, big fundraising, that's another committee with the library that we'll talk about later.
But the Turkey Shoot is really fun, so thanks for reminding us about that. Thank you, Eva and Angela. Um, the Merrick Public Library Development Fund Committee, that would be the group that Eva just mentioned, so, um, they meet, they have some funds that will be used, um, eventually for things that support the library. They're a lovely group. They meet quarterly, uh, what do you say, quarterly, would you say? Yeah. Um, so, I have been the person who's been going to those. Um, they do the bricks. Um, they're, they're a wonderful group, very supportive, and just waiting for direction from us on what we're, what we're going to do with that. So, that's where we are with the Development Fund. Karen, Town Center Committee?
Yeah, the Town Center Committee, um, is, it's an interesting committee. They've been in existence for quite a while, um, at least fifteen years, I'd say. And what, they began with a map, and projects that would enhance the center of the town, um, prioritized on the map, and there were like nine projects. And as these things go, they are, it, it's, it's slow, but things are being, are, are being developed. So, right now, we're, we're, the working on, uh, the South Hegan River Footbridge, and that needs replacement. The River Trail, which needs to be, um, completed. Uh, Woodbury Street sidewalk, which has a lot to do with the schools, because that street, Woodbury Street, is where the high school lets out, and goes down to, uh, DW Highway, and it's dangerous, because there's no sidewalks. And they walk in the middle of the road. There's, um, the high school master plan is being developed. The Town Center Committee is developing a Facebook page, so town members can uh, uh, see what, what the committee is doing, and so on. These, the, the, uh, Department of Public Works has a member on there. Um, there's a lot of town government employees, staff, that are working together, where they normally wouldn't be able to. And I, as the, um, library representative, I speak up on, on things that may have something to do with us. Now, they meet about once a month on Fridays at noon. So, a lot of the, um, a lot of the members of the committee come during their lunch hour from work. And I can do that. I can go Fridays at noon. So, it's the date and the time that have kept me on the committee. And it, it's a very interesting committee, because I get to, you get to see aspects of the town that you may not normally know anything about. So, I, I would be happy to stick with it, or if somebody really wants it, then they can have it.
Well, thank you, Karen. I think that one of the things to keep in mind is that we want at least one trustee to be a liaison. There's no harm in having two, but we can't have three, because three would make it a quorum, and we don't want to ever have three trustees together and have a quorum on something like this, so. Um, okay, so Karen, you've said that you are interested in continuing with the Town Center Committee, or should I say willing to? I'm fine with continuing with the Development Fund. Is there anybody who has an interest in helping with either one of those, or um, becoming the liaison for the Friends? Any takers? Okay, well, perhaps you will consider it, and, um, you know, I will be happy to go. I know, Soheeney, you have a new job, and that is a lot right now, too. So, I understand you're not wanting to take something new on. Um, I can go to the Friends meeting next week on the twenty-sixth, and perhaps people will think about whether they would like to take that on, and you can just let me know that you would like to step in and do that at some point. That would be great, so. I will plan on going.
I can attend the Friends. I just don't think I can do it every, every month.
So, why don't we, I mean, I'm happy to go on the twenty-sixth, if I'm around, and maybe we will just, and then maybe if you could do the May one, and we can just see it like that, unless someone can make a commitment. Okay? I'll be, I'll go to the one this week, so that's fine, or next week, that's fine. I'm on vacation, why wouldn't I go? Okay, so, all right, um, and then, uh, we have the library committees also. Um, there's a Personnel Committee, Building and Maintenance Committee, and a Finance Committee. These meet very rarely. Um, you know, if there's maybe an issue or concern, the Personnel Committee might meet to talk about something. I, you know, I, I don't know if these have outlived their purpose or not, and that maybe is a discussion for us at the retreat. I know when there have been things for the Finance Committee, like regarding policies, the two members of the Finance Committee would meet, work on the policy, and then bring it to the Board, so that sort of thing. Um, so Personnel is Karen and Janice.
Right.
Um, and Building and Maintenance was, um, is me and Janet, and Finance is Soheeney and Janet.
No.
Would anybody like to speak? Where are you, Finance, Soheeney? No?
No, you and I were Finance, and Soheeney, and I were Building.
Okay, I was Building before, so you can see how much we meet, that I was in the church group I was on, so.
Yeah, we've never met for the Building Maintenance.
You know, so, they're a great, they're there. We would, it would be great to have somebody on Personnel. Um, because if an issue, yeah, Karen is the Personnel person, but if there were an issue, or, you know, something, it is nice to have two people who Eva can consult with, without bringing the whole Board on, and then can move on from there. So, um, we don't have to decide today, that, um, but these would be great ways to get involved, Mike, if there's an area that you're interested in, but you know, it's a lot, your very first day, so think about it, and and we can give you more information, so. Does anybody want to speak to any of the committees? I don't think there's any updates on anything, but. No, okay. All right, so that brings us to a review of April's action items. And I really think, Janet, it's really you, that you are going to review some, so you're going to find out um, how you're going to move the money, you're going to move the money from DCU to Fidelity.
Watson money, yep.
Watson money, thank you. You're going to release the Quimby funds from the Quimby Memorial, I wrote it down in my other, um, to the trustees of the trust fund.
Yep, that, that's the DCU money, yep.
And then you're going to find out from Chris Christiansen, the proper way to sell and transfer the stock at Fidelity.
Yep.
To them, okay. Are there any?
I also have for next month, um, the, um, investment ideas for Watson. Bring the information to the Board.
Okay. Okay, I will add to that, that Eva is going to, um, get a quote on carpet to bring back to us. And we are, the trustees are each going to complete a SWOT for the twenty-ninth, or twenty-eighth, the meeting on the twenty-eighth with Jason. Okay. Is there anything else? Okay. Um, I would just like to let you know that I don't think I can do the date of the next meeting, but, um, if it's okay with everybody, I will let you know for sure, on the twenty-eighth, I have a work commitment at some point that week, and, um, some family commitments a couple of nights that week, but I, I might be able to do a date, it just might not be that Tuesday. So, I will confirm, it's a Family Literacy Week, so I need, just need to find out what dates I'm committed to, just in my school, it is, so I have to just find out what nights I'm working, um, for them. And then I will let you know if everybody's okay with just waiting till the twenty-eighth to firm up a date for our May meeting, if that's okay, I would appreciate it. Okay, we normally meet on the third Tuesday of every month, but things happen, right? So, thank you. Um, other meetings of note, the Merrick Public Library Development Fund Committee meeting will be April twenty-seventh at five PM via Zoom. I will be spending a lot of time on libraries, so next week. Um, the Library Board will be discussing building proposals, April twenty-eighth at six-thirty. And, um, really, again, just to clarify, this is just, we're looking at the strengths and weaknesses of different site options for a future library. And the New Hampshire Library Trustees Association has their annual conference on May twelfth and May thirteenth, nine-thirty AM to two-forty-five, um, PM, virtually. The New Hampshire Library Trustees Association is a great resource. Um, you will be um, added as a member, Mike, and you will get their flyers, and their newsletter, and all kinds of great information from them. I was just, I had a question, for instance, about something. I Googled it, they had like an FAQ question and answer. I was able to just, somebody else had that same question, go figure, and they had a response right there, so it is a valuable resource, so. Okay, um, now is time for comments from the press, public, and Board members. Do we have any comments people would like to make? Eva?
Just one thing, I, I could email this information out to you guys. The New Hampshire Library Trustee Association is doing the orientation for new trustees. Both of these are virtual. One is April 24th, this Saturday, with the registration deadline of the 17th. So maybe that one's passed. And then June 7th is the other one with the deadline of June 1st. So I can send that information out for anyone who, you know, Michael, this would be a great resource for you. Soheini, I don't know if you attended in the past, but it's always great to have a refresher as well so that you kind of get a grip on what your responsibilities are.
Yeah, because I never, I never received any emails from them. Was I added last year? I don't think so. I was, I didn't receive any emails from them yet.
Well, you get your, your physical mail here at the library and I put it in your box.
Okay.
There's also a listserv that you can sign up for and that's, they send out emails, like if somebody's on the listserv that has a question, they'll put just a question out there, what do you do for this, or just general information. And that gets sent out if you're on the listserv. So.
I don't know. I have mail waiting at the library. I'll go and pick it up.
Yeah, Yvette, do you want to talk about our mailboxes? So.
I can. I was gonna mention something else, though. But, um, yes, you have, the trustees have a mailbox, which is in the foyer of the library. It's labeled trustees and you will need to come see me to sign out a key, just so we can kind of keep track of the keys. You used to have a drawer before we moved the circulation desk to where it is currently. And because of COVID restrictions, we were separating staff areas and public areas. So that's why the circulation desk is kind of back in the original spot. And that's why your mailboxes are in the foyer, so that you don't need to feel like you're interrupting what staff are doing to get your mail. But I, you know, I'm always putting checks in there for Janet to sign and they get back to me. You know, staff will give it to me and put it in my box. So Janet, I'll probably have a check for you tomorrow. But yeah, so that's, that's, you know, in terms of like, if you want something printed out for your packet, then I would put it in your mailbox like that. But the other thing I wanted to ask, you know, Deb, I know you had sent out the media relations policy. Did you want to mention that or explain it or anything since we're still in the meeting?
I just wanted, I know that with changes to, with the governor's change in the mask mandate, that there were discussions on social media and I just wanted us to, you know, be cognizant of it, right? So that there was a policy, because I saw what you posted on the Facebook page, Yvette, which was completely appropriate and gave people the information they needed. And, you know, we just want to be thoughtful because I don't know, I think all the time, like if I post something, whether it's from me as a trustee or not, that's the way people take it. So I just wanted to remind people, when you start to see stuff come up, if people are saying things about the library, good or bad, that we just want to be mindful of our responses on that, because, you know, there's a policy in place for a reason. So I know that some former employees were posting stuff and, you know, people have a right to post what they want to post and that's fine. It was, it was like explaining stuff and supporting, and that's great. We just want to be mindful of trustees, that people think of us as trustees first and that we're speaking as the body of the board, and we're not. So. That's all. So.
I, I think just to underscore that, because I've, you know, I've been the director for a very long time now. And so I've lived through all these different configurations of board members. You need to remember that you act as a board and you cannot speak on behalf of the board unless the board has voted for you to speak on behalf of the board. And we've had some problems in the past and we don't want to harm the relationship that we have with the town or with the public or confuse anyone. But that's really why.
And I think that, I think that it's, it's, it's an issue that brings up a lot of emotions for people and lots of people have lots of different opinions and different sides on it. And I just think we want to be mindful of that, you know, and thoughtful about that. So. That's all. So it just seemed like a good time with, when I heard that, oh, I heard, saw the library mentioned on a forum or something. I thought, oh, hmm, I think it's probably time to look at that policy for me, too, because there's a lot of policies on the board, on the website that we don't look at all the time, right? We look at them when you ask us to update them and stuff. So it's good to just be mindful of that.
And just to let you know, I am not on any of these groups anymore. So I, I, I don't read.
And that's fine. And that's fine. And I actually did not.
The very negative and the cranky, I don't read.
I actually did not see this. Somebody told me about it. And so, you know, and so that was all. So I just was like, oh.
If you guys see it and mention it to me, I have no idea what you're talking about. And please do not ask me to get on the forums because I feel like it's my blood pressure and I know you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, and you know, it's.
Not for me.
Yeah. Yeah. So, and I just think, you know, too, that we want to be nuanced and it's hard to be nuanced and to be considerate. And I shouldn't say it's hard to be considerate. Things are often misinterpreted, I should say, you know, on, because we don't get to have a back and forth. And I don't think that's just social media, that's email, texts, it's all of those things, right? It's hard to have a really nuanced, considerate conversation in a lot of those things. So it's just, it's just better not to. So. So anyways, the policy is very clear and your statement was completely appropriate. And I just wanted to call people to mind that it had been addressed, that you had mentioned it in the Facebook page and that that was one of the avenues for communication. And that we'll just keep it at that for now. So. Okay. All right. So even when people say great things, I'm like, oh, it's so great that people are saying great things. But, you know, I'm just gonna sit here and be really happy that people love the library. So. Okay, any comments, thoughts, or questions before we say? Okay. Well, thank you to everyone. Not one of our records, it was 9:03. We were on for a little longer, but we got a lot done. So if any time, Mike, you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to any of us. You know, Janet would really be the person that can answer most of the financial questions. She's like our source of that. But we are all here to answer your questions and help you in any way that we can. So. Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Janet, thank you. Okay.
I'll second.
And Soheini will second. Okay, I will vote in favor. Janet?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
No? There's always one. Okay, Karen?
Yes.
And Soheini?
Yes.
Okay, I think that might be a first, but okay, 5:00, so we, motion passes and the meeting is adjourned at 9:04. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Thank you.
See you next week.
Oh, yes, see you next week. So.